So we are gonna call the Woodbury Town Select Board Meeting to order at 6:03 on December 23, 2024, and our first order of business is adjustments to the Select Board Agenda.
I've got one or two things to mention.
Okay. When do would you like to do those? Do you wanna... Do they have titles?
Well, one is that John Gordon sent this to me for a sign of flood resilient communities fund application.
Okay. You wanna do that right after the Fire Chief's report? Kinda as we go into the Recovery Officers? Seems like kinda like a flood-related. John Gordon.
So there was a flood resilient communities?
Flood resilient communities fund. It was about the buyout for the Jake Shattuck property.
Was that the only adjustment?
Oh, I also wanted to just report a little bit on the tax mapping.
All right, and tax mapping. How about we do that right after John's before we talk about town meeting?
Okay.
Tax mapping. Is that already on your list?
Yep.
All right. So next item is to approve December 9th and December 17th meeting minutes?
Oh, I'll move that we approve these meeting minutes, and here's the copy.
All right, so Danielle has moved that we approved both sets of meeting minutes as written. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in fever, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously?
Yeah, I couldn't get the watermark to remove itself.
This here?
Yeah, so they're kind of a ghost or watermark. I finally realized I could make it white. Oh, yeah. What are you butter marks on there? I don't know why. You don't have to write that down. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And here are Lizzie's copies.
Oh, thank you.
All right, there doesn't appear to be any public present except for folks who are already on the agenda. So we'll move right on to Town Clerk's report. It is a holiday, so Robin is not here this evening. I'm not sure if she submitted a written one, or we'll just table that discussion for the next time, which is fine either way. So that's, since that's the case, we'll go right on to Brady and the Town Treasurer's report.
So the past two weeks, taking in for cash receipts $32,583.26. Out of that was $31,908.26 was delinquencies. The rest, dog fees, recording, copies, vault time, $675. Wow. That's not correct. So I see a written error. So where it says Vermont Full Harmless, we did get a transfer in, but it's for FEMA, so I will make that correction and reissue new Treasurer's reports. So we received electronically into our checking $32,274.82, and this is reimbursement on 2023's FEMA. Payroll over the last two weeks, $10,829.3. Account payable today was $84,944.53, and I transferred $30,000 today to cover our expenses. So I've been behind the scenes, working on the budgets as you've been making revisions. So those numbers are all plugged in. I meant to bring you the raise increase of 5% per... And it's all nice typed up pretty on that pink paper for signature. If you guys see the signature, so I can go forward and plug the numbers into the budget. So I will email that to you guys. I still want it signed.
I'm sorry, what do you need before you can put the 5% in?
So every year, when you guys give me what you want for raises, it's in an Excel spreadsheet of what everybody will be bumped up to. That's where I get you guys to sign it, and then it gets recorded so that I'm not just making up, oh, you need this, you get this much. So once those are approved, then I go in and calculate the budgets.
Oh, okay.
So what I'll do is email it. The next Select Board Meeting, I still want you to approve it, but just in the meantime, that way I can get the numbers in for wages for everybody.
But you can, you can put them in now, right? Even though it's not approved? I mean, it's not like we're gonna...
Right, I will. I will.
We don't have to wait until after the next meeting? Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna email you that chart, and then just, I'll just remind you, have you sign it at the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
All right.
Other goodies, other goodies.
Brady, do you know offhand how much total we've received in our FEMA payout?
Up 23.
Up 23.
So we still have $52,000 left to collect. That one was up over $200,000.
So we're roughly at like 240 or something like that at this point? Okay.
So I need to sit down. I wanted these all in a perfect little world. That 23 FEMA would be held cleared up, and then I could disperse that. But I need to sit down with Skip and Danielle because each, when we receive like that $32,000, they know where that money goes to, whether it's the general fund, whether it's the highway. So once the money, all the money has been collected, then I'll disperse it to each fund.
So that 300, or ballpark 300,000 that will come back from FEMA has to get distributed to either highway for that portion or the general fund?
Yep.
Okay, good enough.
Whether it's work, so yeah, Danielle and Skip get paid out of the general fund, so that'll be reversed. But yeah, so I want it to be clear in and out of those two FEMA accounts, 23 and 24, that once all the reimbursement is back, it's zeroed, then I will start dispersing it where it goes.
If I understand right, we had 2024 floods, there have been no reimbursements yet, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, I made copies of this one that Skip sent us, if you haven't seen it.
I think it came in today, and I don't think I had, I didn't have time to sit down, but we can talk about it at...
Thank you.
Maybe during that 6:35. Thank you, Brady. Anything else you wanna?
Nope. Of course, there's questions.
By the way, we should announce our decision in the open meeting.
Yeah.
Right, that was an open meeting that we announced it before, but we can announce it again if you want.
Yeah, we should.
Sure. Again, thank you, Brady. Paul and Redditt have just arrived, just in time for the 6:25 Fire Chief's Report and Budget Request.
I did email. Do you have copies?
I...
No.
I saw the email, but I haven't had a chance to.
I'm prepared.
Well, we'll turn it over to the two of you.
Yeah.
You go first. You go first.
I'll go first, okay.
Is this your Fire Chief's report?
I haven't finished that, yet.
Okay, okay. That's still coming.
Kind of that, what is the time I gotta get it to you? When is the first week in January?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little behind. You've been a camera recall slightly.
So the good news about the budget is it's basically level funded. The appropriations we're asking for, it's only 0.76% more than the total from last year.
Wow.
And so the articles are on the first page, and the reason, the second page you've got your budget. Our operating budget did go up 4.16%, but we also paid off a truck, so the truck replacement funding needs to be high. We moved a thousand of that into the capital, and the rest of it to balance all of this out. That's pretty much it. We don't yet know what the payment on the loan will be.
It should be what's there, but we're double checking with the bank, because we're closing out the construction loan.
That's good.
Hopefully before the end of the year.
Good sign.
We'll see.
Yeah.
She's not around, so it's like a public, kind of like extended again.
We need to get that part done. And then the third page is the annex, expenses that Paul's been talking to about the annex, just so you can see what those numbers are.
Thank you.
And then we take over the payment.
Because we're gonna probably get out of there this winter sometime, and we'll finish paying through the budget for us. And if you can add that in, pretty much the food shelf, only levels left in there. There's only one heating system and one meter, so.
So that's basically what we need to budget for is heat.
Yeah, heat and electric.
Heat and electric, yeah, okay.
And those are the numbers, Hannah, pull them out.
Great.
Talking about last time I was here.
That's it?
Great. Just out of curiosity, does, do we have a line item in our budget for, or has that been like a part of the Fire Department's request, the heat and electricity for the annex?
It's been in our budget.
It's been in your budget.
So we need to create a line item for that?
Right. I have a suggestion to that, but we can do that at budget.
Yeah.
We don't know what the disposition of that building's gonna be yet, because we've got all the stuff moving parts still. We still own it, but we don't own all these buildings, but we still own some of them.
Yeah, so I always wondered how the food shelf could get away with such a tiny budget, but I guess this is why.
Yeah, it's gonna be that free rent.
We just left it that way, because nobody argued about it, and Roy upset the atmosphere.
That's good.
Everybody's happy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Redditt. So we...
So these are the three articles, as usual?
In the, we've been morphing away from the truck fund, and what you'll see is all those funds won't end up in the capital, but they'll, some, what we're seeing is really dramatic truck price increases. So like, we were planning a half a million dollars for an engine, and they're 7, 800 now. So we're having to adjust that. For a lot of cap trucks, you're seeing the same kind of fire trucks have gone. And we're looking at two to three years once you order something to get it now.
When was the last time you purchased a truck?
19, we bought engine one, we bought a demo.
Yep.
The next purchase, I'm probably gonna start working on this winter to replace the 2005 tanker. Again, it's due in '06, but we're probably not gonna get it till, that's why I need to get moving on it. It's not due for another year and a half, but it's a better start, or people aren't gonna have it till much older than I am.
And the $100,000 towards the new Fire Department, that's probably gonna change somewhat when you go through bonding?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, what I wanted to do was wait till we were done with the building, and then we'll work on this bond proposal, maybe the next, next calendar year thing.
We need some dust to settle.
Because I'm still working with the Sanders, I'll get into my side, but I'm still working with the Sanders and addition and all that stuff. I don't know how that's gonna play out yet.
I have a question. Where are you, where are you gonna park?
We never had enough parking here. That was a give, a give with this building, was going to that small site. Really not a lot of parking.
Yeah, but they took, I mean, with that big mound system, that's...
That's so I could flush one toilet.
Yeah.
800 gallons a day. Welcome to regulation.
That could have been a good parking area.
We just go with the flow, literally, yes. If you saw what was in that mound system, we could probably, half the village could run off that thing, but according to regulation, yeah. Literally, we have, I think, three sinks and one toilet.
Only washing machine.
Oh, washing machine, yeah. But we don't, again, we use a lot, yesterday we had a lot of fire, but usually.
So you guys are in there, and it's operational right now?
What's that?
The Fire House is operational, you're using it?
It's closed. We don't have water over there yet.
Yeah.
There's no, so we're thinking we're gonna, we're morphing into Chief's report, so we're probably gonna move in middle of January, maybe? Getting people to get in and finish things is the frustration. Like, the electrician's supposed to be here, but he's not here. The cabinet guy was supposed to order the cabinets in September, but didn't order them till December, so they're not getting here till February. The snowbarret people can't put the snowbarrets on because they didn't order, they had to order since June, but didn't order them until December, so now they gotta get back. So you see it, just in that kind of thing. The generator, the people brought the generator, broke a whole bunch of stuff. Then the generator ruined its skister, and then came a week later and brought us another generator, and watched the show, so just, I don't know how some of these people make any money. They just watch, they gotta fix price blindly.
Oh.
So, so you went in there, they're finishing things up, it's just a matter of how quickly they get it done. The well pump people are supposed to go in first week in January, then they can get the water system working.
With the same well upstairs.
Yeah, the electrician's gotta get outside and wire up the sewer pump, and wire up the floor drain pump, because everything's on pumps. So until that's done, we can't really move in. But they're saying the middle, middle of January, so we'll spend, the kitchen will be in March, and the rest of the work will happen in the spring, snowbarrets and site work.
Getting close.
We're gaining on it. So that's the building, it's so far, we're within budget of, you know, we're, what we started with, it was higher than 1.3, we're close to 1.5 with the state's addition, the new septic that they paid for. So we'll see how this, so far, we're, we're staying, staying in that budget. As far as USDA side, through the Sanders earmark that we've got, we're working toward getting the other 2,000 square foot on there to replace the old village station that's been flooded, now again, this summer. The first shot across the bow, get ready for this number, was 1.7 millions per 2,000 square feet. But that just, that's only $800 square foot, so, so we had a conversation, and now it's lower than that. So they're there at 1.3. I think we can do better. We're a low enough number now where we can move forward with USDA, actually get into bidding. The downside to dealing with USDA is everything has to be through engineers. This project was construction or design build, we have to have everything. So we're paying complete architectural services, complete engineering services, so it's a lot of money. Probably, I think they're saying around 175 to 200,000 soft costs of permitting and engineering. So that's driving up, and our sprinkler system's a couple hundred thousand dollars, so that's really driving, because the state says we gotta have it, we do anymore, so, and I'm not opposed to it.
You need to have that because of the addition?
Well, because the, when the state adopted the fire code that we have now, they said all emergency services buildings have to have sprinkler systems. The idea is we don't wanna burn down your key facilities. I agree with the idea, it's just difficult in towns like ours. So in round one, I convinced them to give us a variance, so we hardened the inside of the building. Firewise is a fire-rated wall, there's fireproof sheet rock on everything. We put in a complete automatic alarm system, which is monitored like we have here in the town garage and stuff. But they said if you do, if there's ever money available for a sprinkler, or you ever put any more square footage on, you gotta put the sprinklers in. Well, then we get the money through the Congress, so I gotta put the sprinkler system in. So that's how that played out. So hopefully, we'll get the USDA application in through the next week, next month, I'm hoping. And I guess the process is, is they'll approve it. It's our money, so we're not competing for it. Then we've gotta make sure we've got all the funds, which, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and then they would let us start. But we're working through the, they did soil testing for gasoline, which I got the state petroleum cleanup fund to pay for. That's pretty close to 30,000.
And when does that happen?
That's already happened. They've done the testing. I haven't seen the results, and then they're gonna do a, an emergency plan, which is, apparently, emergency plans cost 15,000.
Does that mean they have to look faster?
A plan for what they might do if they ever had any fumes coming up on our land, so. It's an expensive plan, I don't know. And they said any remediation if it were to need to be the state to pay for, so. Yeah. I'm smirking because it's a lot of money being spent for pretty much nothing, which everyone over there says there's no issue, but...
I mean, yeah, even though somebody else is paying for it, it's still all our money.
It's still tax money being spent, so I'm not really smiling about it, because it costs a lot, it's cost us all a lot of money for, it's just really frustrating, even the people doing this, you know, we really don't think there's anything here, but it's a good idea to do this. I would think so too, if I was a consultant. Anyway, and we're having the same thing on the engineering side. They wanna spend 15,000 to do a soil, what do they call it, a geotechnical study?
Excuse them.
So I gotta pay someone to go drill, drill the soil that they already have dug in and know what's there to, because the engineer wants it, so, but he, no one will move forward unless we do it. So we're sort of, you know, they're, again, we're being forced, and the problem with spending that money is it takes it right out of the substance of your project. Someone have a piece of paper, and goes, oh, yeah.
Maybe more to find a different engineer.
Yeah.
So it's just...
Yeah, and every time, it's money, so here we are. So we're just delaying, delaying, delaying. So we're having this, you know, again, they, they put you in these boxes where you have to pay. So I've been in every level, like getting the access permit. The state D-Trans wouldn't talk to me, wouldn't talk to me, wouldn't talk to me. Give the, give the engineer 1,500 bucks, he had the permit in two days. See how it works, so.
That's gotta be frustrating.
It is frustrating, but again, you can be mad, or you can just do it, move on. That's what we had to do, you're gonna...
Yeah.
Just gonna play the game.
Because of the progress.
We're getting there. It's just, it's, it's just, I'm like, what is it now? What is it now?
Yeah, number N.
So any questions on the Sanders money? I've got a meeting, I had a meeting with the, not them, but their staffers last week, and I'm probably gonna be meeting both, well, just Sanders and Ballant, I think next week, over this issue and another issue. They wanted to talk to us.
This new section is gonna involve digging out more of the bank?
Yeah, so the rest of the bank comes out, two garage bays and a meeting room, and there's a room for the sprinkler system.
So what happens to all the soil that gets excavated?
It'll get hauled where it fell location like before.
There's no, no regulation on that?
No, as long as we take it to an open, non-wetland area, you can't go to where there's a wetland. That's the only regulation we had. And I smartly make it the responsibility of the contractor, so wherever they take it, it's on them, so if it's a problem. And on the buyout, I received some emails from them telling me my application was incomplete, and she sent me a copy of the application last week, which was complete, which I pointed out to her, and she said, oh, yeah, it is.
Oh, wow.
And that was my email from them. So, and I, so I asked them, when are there new fundings coming out? She said, maybe the middle of this coming month, so maybe we'll see some movement on that.
This is for the other, the old building?
Yeah, to do a buyout, whoever you guys would take ownership, when we do the same, they'll tear it down and give us some money toward the Sanders side of this, and so that's, I just don't know. We gotta kind of wait for all that to, to play out. So that'll be a process, because we're gonna have to, this water system would have to be moved, you gotta take the oil tank out of the ground, dig it all up. There's a lot that'll go on there, so. So that's, that's one of those don't hold your breath things. As far as emergencies, it's been relatively busy around here. We had four calls yesterday, two different house fires yesterday. EMS calls are off the charts. I think everybody's older in town, so it's, there's been a lot of medical calls. We're out pretty much every day now, twice on, or four times on Sunday, so. Don't wanna say we weren't out today, but it started at 3:30. By noon, we'd had four calls, two house fires. We had a whole big plane field in the morning, and woke up in the afternoon.
Can't tell you how much, just from watching them, that needs to be a morale booster for all this.
I'm sorry.
A morale booster for all these calls, because working out of that small space, not just watching them.
Yeah, we had an injury yesterday, because someone hauling the bottles back and forth, somebody fell and cracked their melon, and has a concussion now.
Oh.
If you're inside, it wouldn't be happening that way. So it's that, because you're having to take your airbags apart, wash them in this building, hike all the way around, the annex blow up, and then that was happening, someone fell and smashed their head, so.
Oh.
It's complicated. So that's type of stuff we're gonna get away from, I hope. So everything's going good, otherwise we could use more manpower, so if anyone's feeling like joining the Fire Department.
Things are a little bit slow in terms of that?
Yeah, I mean, it goes in cycles. We got up to 22 folks, and then it always happens, we lost five in the last year. Because again, you typically keep people four or five years where they become useful, and then they, if they really like it, they stay, and you keep them longer, or a good percentage kind of move on, because it's not easy work. It's not for everybody. A lot of people try it out, and eh, this is too much for me.
It's a commitment.
It's a big commitment, there's a lot of training, and it, and it's hard on you. You know, yesterday, we were in a basement fire, we were attacked by an basement fire, very dangerous, and then everybody got cleaned up, and we all showed up soaking wet and woke up in a big garage fire. So everything froze, and so they're pretty tired by the end of the day.
Yeah, sure.
So we've had enough of this crap, like, you can see why. Or we've had, you know, we seem to have a lot of CPR calls with death resulting, and so those are hard on people. You're in the hole, four or five in the last year. It's just, it's very tough.
Nothing you can do.
We've had, I think, three very serious car accidents in the last month. One required dark transport, and two required the use of our jaws of life, so. That stuff wears on you.
Yeah, sure.
So we're having to really pay attention to people's mental acuity and making sure people are okay.
Thanks for doing it.
No worries. And I'm not contagious, I'm on the end of a cold. Any questions? They're going okay?
Good. Any questions?
No questions here.
No worries.
Just a thank you.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thanks.
My favorite time of the year.
Thanks for coming in today.
Yeah, you too.
If anybody wants to see the building, call me, we'll let you in.
Preferably with your crew.
So probably the first Tuesday.
And I do the town report first week of January.
Yeah, so this come first Tuesday.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. To the chief's report.
Yep.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Redditt.
You're welcome.
So we have, Skip is not here this evening, but he's our Recovery Officer, and he did send us a report. Danielle printed for us, thank you. We wanna take a, I think it came today, and I honestly haven't had a chance to look at it, so it's all right. Just take a second to read it over.
Yeah, I can't say I really understand it.
Well, 95% of the disaster we leave funds for 2023 have been sent to Woodbury, so we're just at 5% more. You're in.
I just don't understand this part, where it says damage summary, 24 damage inventories, and then 47 discrete damage locations. So maybe that means, maybe the inventories are where they combine a few different locations into one, like with Cabot Road and some other road, that, anyways, yeah. And the number for those two bridges is in there, so that's why it looks so high.
Yep. Yeah, almost, I mean, the two bridges are nine, over $900,000 of that. Yeah, I don't know what, Alfie, do you know what the difference is? Skip says here, he's got a damage summary, and there's 24 damage inventories, but, or Michael, maybe you know, 47 discrete damage locations. Know what the difference is?
Discrete and not.
Yeah.
The difference between 24...
I don't know if you guys got a chance to see this.
He knows.
Many of the discrete ones have not been processed fully.
No, no, I guess if we're...
I feel like maybe I know the answer.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, maybe, it might be not correct, but, um, I think the discrete damage locations are like specific spots where damage occurred, but that they were lumped together by section of road, right? So like, there'd be a category for, I don't know, County Road, and there were several places where there was a situation. That's my guess.
That makes sense.
That's what I said.
Okay.
It's a very logical, cool, without explanation. Any of, you want that for the record?
Well, unless you need it. I cut it, I cut it at home on my computer.
That next one, please?
So unless there's any, I don't know, there's nobody to ask questions to of that Recovery Officer's report, but if there's any, no discussion by the board or anybody else?
We were gonna talk about this.
Yes, we are.
Under that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so I gotta, this came from John Gordon, our Emergency Management Director, and it's an application from something called Flood Resilient Communities Fund. It's an application for a buyout of the property on Route 14, the Jake Shattuck property, and... I don't really know... I don't really know how this differs from the FEMA buyout application, but I think maybe it is different. So he asked me to sign this application.
Where is the, this, this property?
Right across the park. The yellow one.
Yeah.
The yellow house.
Yep.
So I keep hearing on the news about more money coming for this and that and the other things. So that might, this might be a new out of money. I don't.
So it's just an application at this point?
Right, John, keep in track of that.
Okay. So you are going to sign it?
Yeah.
As the board chair?
Yeah.
And hand it back to him?
Right.
Great. Anything else?
Michael, you wanna see this for your minutes? See what I'm gonna sign? I already showed it to him.
I'm just making a note that it was an application that's.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Our next item is the road commissioners' report. Alfie, you're up.
Don't have a lot to report. Got a lot of snow, a lot of freezing rain. Still don't have the five fifty fixed yet. Got a guy who wants to come to our shop and do it. It's just a matter of scheduling.
What happened to the, did the part come that you had ordered?
Yeah, I got the parts, all the parts are there. Just need to get it put in. It's the pinion bearing and the rear axle.
So the plan to have someone put it in in Hardwood, that didn't work out?
Well, yep, I guess I haven't brought you up to speed. It went to Hardwood and they said that they couldn't get it in our, in their shop. I was.
Too vague, you mean?
Don't found it by that because.
Really?
They sell one hundred, five fifties.
Yeah.
There's no reason they shouldn't be able to get it in the shop.
Wow.
I didn't argue with them, but I, I know that was a fish tail. I think they just didn't wanna work on it. So be it, whatever, you know, they could have just said that.
Yeah, really?
They said that they couldn't fit it in the shop and that they couldn't, couldn't do the work. So I, I have located somebody that will come right to our, our facility and do the work and get it together.
Okay.
Great.
But it was sort of scheduled for first of this week, but as Christmas is in the middle of the week, I think, you know, we're gonna have to cut in some slack with that, so. But it's gonna, it's, it's on his radar, so it's gonna happen. It's just a matter of when he finds the time.
Remind me, five fifty carries salt?
That's the salt truck.
Salt truck, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're able to do the salting without it? You explain that less?
I'm using with, using the low pro. But I, right now, I just keep switching back and forth. Salt on first and then I'm gonna dump it off and sand on.
Yeah.
So I'm getting by, it's not, it's not an emergency, but it will be much easier when we have the five fifty. Plus that we use for running around, checking roads and going after parks. Kind of looking forward to that being back on, on the roster. Yeah, that's about all I can report. We haven't really had time to work on the little shelter for the five fifty. The roof is on, but we haven't got the walls on yet, but that's, that will come in time. Trucks, the rest of the equipment seem to be holding up just fine. It seems like there's always something every day to work on or fix as we go, but.
It sounds like tonight? But it's no coming?
Yeah, I'm hearing two to five, something like that. Should be all done mid-morning tomorrow.
Yep.
So we'll be cleaning it up.
Is school out all week?
School is out.
Oh.
So it's just been up to you to four to eight?
Oh, really?
Shoot.
So, yeah, who, who knows? I mean, it's hard to say what we will actually get, but, uh, the forecast says it'll be done snowing by ten or eleven, so.
Yep.
Should be able to clean it up and have our Christmas off. Yeah, it's supposed to be nice after, for the number of days.
Oh. Maybe I'll wait till Thursday to go to Berry.
And you still, remind me, when school's canceled because of snow, you don't get a call at this point, right? To indicate that?
No, I'm not getting calls from them, I don't know. I did last year, uh, when they were canceled, but, uh, I don't get a lot on their list for some reason.
And would that come from the school or would that come from Wildcat Bussing?
Uh, no, it was from the, uh, school superintendent of the school.
Yeah, we should get.
I can check.
You can do that, great. And then normally the decision to close, uh, schools made between the superintendent and road commissioners, or is it made, no, with the boss company?
I have nothing to do with that decision. When I was in Callis, I did.
Yeah.
I would talk through the, through Roger Hill and they would make their decision based on what the five road commissioners suggested.
Yeah.
But that's, that's not happening here now. Which is fine with me, I mean, they're, they, it's their, sort of their call.
Yeah.
Uh, if they have questions, I'm happy to talk to them in the morning to help them with that decision, but there's no service in Woodbury and I'm always in a trouble. Now at a crucial time that they need that information.
Right, right, right.
I'm not really willing for answering the phone.
Okay.
But I think they've been doing fine, I mean, you know, as far as making that decision.
Okay.
But I don't have any, any thing to do with that. I might like to keep it that way.
Fair enough.
Yeah, any questions on roads? And it's been busy, it's been very, very active. Sand piles getting chewed up some, but we're just gonna keep going. We need more, we'll get more.
And there's more sand in our allotment still at the.
There's like six hundred yards more that is in our contract price. Getting ahold of it in the middle of winter, I don't know, we'll, we'll see. But I, we're not, I'm not nervous yet. We've gone a long ways to go.
Yeah.
With our sand piles, so. It'll be all right. But I will, you know, I will wanna get that, that remainder done up first thing in the spring so that we can use up that contract at that, to give a price. And then, and then we'll start a new contract with whatever, whoever bids or how else that plays out.
Remind me, do we need a budget for? Or is that?
It's already.
It's already in this fiscal, next fiscal year? Great, perfect.
We plug in.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Okay. Great.
Probably we'll have to go out to bid again.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Alfie.
Yes.
All right. Any questions?
So one more thing, uh, Michael and I are working on a grant for next year. The deadline is Friday, I think.
Friday, yeah, the twenty-seventh.
So I just, I went today and did a bunch of measuring and figured out what culverts to replace. And so that application will probably come to you for signature.
I actually, I am able, I'm able to just.
Oh, good, okay.
Great.
Great.
Allowed me to do that. Yeah, this is for the Wilbur Road and, um, it's a Better Roads Grant. They were well aware of the problem there with the flooding down to the lake. So it was kind of suggested that we might wanna consider that.
A big, bigger culvert so it'll go downhill faster or what?
Yeah, bigger culvert to handle the flow. The, the problem that happened on the Wilbur Road is that there was a small culvert that couldn't handle the flow of water. Water ran down the road and then spilled off the road, washing away the road bank and then continuing down that very steep hill, trenching out quite a bit of, um, soil on its way down and then flooding camp properties and eventually running into the lake. So the section, there's this one section of road that we'll be working on that's hydrologically connected, but it's pretty obvious that the others are too. They just won't categorize that with an initial inventory. So, um, Better Roads is fine with us working around that, they're kind of aware of the situation. So. So hopefully that will, you know, make the camp owners happy. They were pretty upset about other things that we tried that kind of fell through. That emergency watershed protection program where they didn't see that was a, a project that they wanna find. And then Diana just signed a, we're also gonna, um, apply for a grant to have the, um, rural town highway inventory updated. Was first done in two thousand seventeen. And with the flooding that's happened the last two summers, um, would be good to kind of redo that.
What does that mean? Like the, like the inventory of like culverts and?
Um, not culverts, that's a different inventory. This is basically an inventory of all of the, um, hydrologically connected segments of road, which most of Woodbury is hydrologically connected to something, that are not up to the municipal roads general permit standards.
Okay.
And there are some roads that we have done projects for in the past that are, because of the flooding, they're no longer up to the standards, so. A lot of work to do.
He gives us a guideline as to, you know, for future grants, for future projects to get us up to the standard. To grant, so. I don't know if there's a match, is there a match on this one?
There is a match and this, this is the initial step, which is called a letter of intent for saying, yeah, we would like to update our town highway road inventory.
Okay.
So I don't know how long the steps take to actually have that happen. And probably the Center of Vermont Regional Plan Commission would be the entity that would do the work, which they did that before.
Maybe that's why we got this, this email last week from V Trans. They're wondering about the alignment, the proper alignment of Nichols Dam Road.
I don't think I saw that.
Could have something to do with that.
Has nothing to do with that, I'm aware of. The realignment of the Nichols Dam.
They're, they're, wanna determine the correct alignment of Town Highway thirteen. We have newer elevation data available now that shows the road alignment well. Uh, and I have adjusted the road alignment using the elevation data and the old survey plans of the road that Diana sent us. That led us to realize that we needed to remeasure the road mileage as well. I know, I mean, it's a class four road, so I don't know why they're so concerned about the mileage.
Maybe redo the town highway maps, cause.
That could be.
The road, the map for the road down to the dam is, is not really correct. And no, hasn't been.
Right.
Yeah, they do that every few years, every four years or something.
I'm not sure how frequently they redo that.
Yeah, I got an email today, today was asking if we had done any surface repairs on, uh, Foster Hill. Cause that's a through road. And.
It's a class two?
It's a class two, right? And that's what, so they're sort of overseeing the class twos. And I typed back, I just said, no, there's been no work other than flood repair and, and grading. So I think they were looking for if we, if we have done any repaving or any re-surface gravel. Which we haven't.
And that road was the hard part of Grants and Aid project that will the municipal road general permit. And it's the work that was done with the ditching and stuff is, has been pretty much trashed from the floods. Fortunately, it's just the ditches that are trashed. The road actually held up pretty well. But that's something that would need to be done again.
And that was done like maybe four years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A few, a number of years ago, yeah. It'd be more than four, yeah.
So no more floods this summer.
All right. Figure out who town. Thank you, Alfie.
Yes.
Thanks, Michael, too, for all the.
And you're gonna get us some numbers if we need to budget for anything for twenty-six?
Yeah, um, I actually did a little bit of that for tonight if you wanted me to. I could wait till the budget part or if you want, um. But generally with the Grants and Aid, um, uh, grants that we get, the, the match pretty much is always met by the work that the road crew does. So it's not really any special money, but I know that Brandy likes to have those matches as part of the budget. So, um, you know, the two grants, um, that we finished up this year, one was a Better Roads Grant and the other was a, a Grants and Aid Grant. I pretty much finished, I finished one report and sent it in. I pretty much finished the other report. And with each grant, um, the town more than met the match through, um, the road crew. So there won't be any out of, you know, surprise, out of pocket money. And that's for fiscal year twenty-five anyway. This Better Roads Category D Grant for Wilbur Road. Alfie has done some measuring and has, and has got a sense of, given me a sense of materials, et cetera, for the application and what the actual award will be, we won't know until probably after the budget is finished. But, um, I'll have a sense from the ballpark figure of how much that would be.
Match-ish.
Yeah, so I could send that. And then we probably will do another Grants and Aid for fiscal year twenty-six. And that's generally about fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars.
Fourteen-five, I think it was.
Yeah, so usually with that, it's, uh, like the, um, Grants and Aid, the King Connor Road, which we have set for work, that's a fifteen thousand dollar grant. And the towns match is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That work would be done, um, before June thirtieth, so it's not really fiscal year twenty-six. Although the report doesn't have to be done by June thirtieth, so. So we may actually go into fiscal year twenty-six. But, but again, I would anticipate that, um, it, it wouldn't be a specific amount that would come out of the town highway budget. It would be more paid for by the town through labor and materials and stuff.
Yeah, the wash.
We do have, um, the, a V Trans Structures Grant that we'll be applying for the beginning of the year for the culvert here in the village at the bottom of the valley, they grow. The, the one that kind of slipped through the cracks, um, last year. And the estimate for that project is, is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I've been trying to get ahold of the V Trans guy. I think it's a ninety percent, ten percent match, but, um, and I don't know. Yeah, so that, and we would probably, usually we've hired those out because it's a major project. So that might be something that we could anticipate.
You said ten percent on two ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
Two seventy-five-five.
Two seventy-five.
I sent an email wanting to know whether it's eighty, twenty percent, which is kind of the standard.
Normal, right.
But I remember these structured grants, they tend to pay, pay more. I think the ones that we've done in the past have been ninety percent, ten percent town match.
Okay.
So, um, so I'm waiting for reply. And again, I'll, I'll have that information hopefully this week or early next week. And that's pretty, pretty much it. We'll do another Grants and Aid, um, for fiscal year twenty-six. So we could budget, you know, just kind of estimate by what we usually get. And I can, I can send that information to you too. That's it.
All right. So those are things that will be between the two of you?
Yeah, I'll try to grant you those figures.
Okay, great.
Some of them are just guesses, or educated guesses, I guess, but.
Just to get an estimated match.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks again, Michael and Brandy. And John, waited so patiently for, uh, the update on the AV equipment website upgrades and. That's it. Yeah.
So, uh, if you've got a chance to look at the AVs, hopefully they don't spend much time on. on, but basically, I think I've done all the homework on it. It's the town needs a laptop to run the equipment it has. It gets a laptop with a fairly large screen that can use probably standalone for simple meetings. The one-time spend is eight hundred or less. And then the IT folks would like it to have antivirus software, it would be sixty a year after that. That's pretty much it.
So Brandy, all the AV, I mean, IT upgrades that were done this year?
Yep.
You said we were going to be able to pay for them out of surplus from last year?
No.
Even though it wasn't budgeted?
Well, I had recommended was using some of the Lister's education, which no longer exists, that there's a pot of money sitting there. So whether we divide our securities, our technology systems into Lister, the sections.
So when we agreed to take that all on, I understood that
RB Technologies?
Yeah, that we had money for that.
We had budgeted partials, but not full.
So we need to budget?
The IT grant that I applied for was barely. It was accepted by one person, and this didn't have, didn't have securities. Yeah, it was denied until next January.
So that, what Diana's talking about is our one-time upfront cost to do what RB Technology has done for us.
Which was almost fifteen thousand.
Right. And then that was not budgeted, and there was no
No, it wasn't budgeted.
Yeah.
Our copier wasn't budgeted either.
Right.
And they're going to make up the money next year for a deficit.
So we need to budget for that, for instance?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
I totally misunderstood that.
And then, John, did you have a chance to talk to Skip? Because there was a question about whether this would be, would be audio AV equipment, or whether it'd be tech equipment?
I did talk with him.
Okay.
And he's fine with it, with the understanding that he and RB Tech don't have to maintain it.
Okay.
He understands it's AV, so it's considered part of the AV kit, even though it's a computer. And then RB Tech said that they'd like to have some extra antivirus software on it, even though it's being used on the public part of the town's network, like the hotspots. If it were inadvertently connected to the internal network, it would have the same antivirus protection on it that the town computers, they're on the internal network now have. So with those two revises, he completely signs off on it.
Great.
So let me take a step back here, as my mind's twirling here. So we haven't filed, Skip and Danielle haven't filed anything for the town office, because it's not complete yet.
Yeah.
So that was part of it. So once the town office is complete, as far as sheetrocked all the wiring, what the LCT didn't cover, that could go to FEMA when Skip files it. But Skip can't file it until the work is done in the town office.
But it doesn't appear that it's going to cost more than what the insurance already paid.
So why are you, so we got the money back from the insurance, so it's paid off, so
Like the twenty-eight thousand dollars, yeah. Is that what it was? I don't have that spreadsheet with me, but
This is for the renovation of the town offices?
Right, correct.
Yeah.
Correct, that it was up and beyond, right. If it's not up and beyond, then we already received our money and it's covered.
Right.
So the majority of that money went to RB Technologies.
What? The money for the, from the insurance company?
If you hypothetically look at what you're getting. Yeah. Well, the money just doesn't sit there. So if we go over in one thing, it's just like the highway, so it's not, like, that money was, is just sitting there, nobody's touching it. It's all in the big bundle of spending.
Yeah, it's under your miscellaneous income or something like that. There's a line item in the budget under revenue.
Under the government?
Under the
General?
General fund.
So that big hunk of money that you're looking at?
Yeah.
Is the fire department's reimbursement from BLCT for the floods. That went in and went out, so you got it incoming for revenue, you got it outgoing for miscellaneous expenses.
Does that show up here?
Yeah.
Is that that two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars? Under miscellaneous income, miscellaneous revenue?
So miscellaneous, if you're on page five, well, this is showing last year's. If you're on page five and look at miscellaneous, it's a hundred and fifty-one grand. That was for the fire department, getting its reimbursement. Now, if you go to expenses
Page three?
No, it should be the same.
Oh, so
So if you're looking for revenue, okay, so right through where you, okay, so revenue, this is, is two hundred and thirty-seven grand.
Okay.
Yeah, it's page three.
So, yeah, sorry, I was looking at
So the insurance payment is part of that?
Hundred and fifty-one thousand was the fire department's. So out of the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, it kicked over, and that's what I had to give the fire department.
You said one hundred and fifty what?
So on page five, a hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred, twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents.
Fire department reimbursement?
Yes, for all their claims.
But the long and the short of it is, is that we, between RB Technologies
We'll have to make up for it next year.
We have to make up for it next year, so we have to just plan. So we know
The thing is, I mean, Skip's been doing, Skip, Raffi, Sani, Skip, Lindsay, there's so many people that have been doing this job for free.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not questioning it, I just mostly, do we have an idea what we need to budget for that?
In the deficit, once, well, we're not done a year yet, so we're only halfway, we can estimate, and that's what we're going to have to go off of.
Okay.
Because our fiscal year isn't going to be done until June thirty.
Okay.
So it's just an estimate.
Just a guess?
Yep.
Okay.
But there, yeah, if you look on your due-to, due-for page, which is the very last page, and this, and you may not like this idea, which I'm just putting it out there. We have an item line that's Fund Number Twelve. It's for the fire department. It's a reserve fund. That, that money could be used for heating and
Of the annex.
Right.
Okay.
This was cushioned and set away, and it's never been used.
But that's only five thousand dollars. Oh, that was a fund that Brian wanted to set up, yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, we should give away that.
Also, the Listers got nine grand. There's no more education offered. I love new tax maps, but yeah, there's
We're going to talk about that.
But that can also be out of the reappraisal money. So there's, there's money there, it's just not being used, and it could be used.
So then, John, does it feel like you need a motion from the select board to go ahead and purchase this, or?
Up to you.
Yeah, I guess does the board need to make a motion to do something?
As I said, no, it certainly benefits the town. It's also not a god-awful right now to keep the lights on, so it's not a huge ticket, either eight hundred, but I don't know how that works for this year's budget or next year's budget. That's the info, and the rest of it's up to the select board.
And other, aside from the select board, other committees and planning commissions, they could all use this as well for opening it up for recording meetings or Zoom a meeting or?
Right.
Okay.
But it's not for recording.
You can record it.
It is for recording.
We can record a
Any meeting can be recorded.
And John, just to make sure, I heard you right, it's eight hundred dollars or less for the laptop, and then sixty dollars a year for the antivirus software?
Correct.
Okay.
So if this new rig can also record, then how do you get the recording off of it and put it onto the website?
That's easy to do.
Okay.
Just down.
Okay.
Up and down. I say it's easy, but I don't know how to do it.
You know, some, in some of the circles Michael is storing the equipment now, because of the town office, so once the management gets done
Once the basement is done, I would love to be able to store it.
Why, right home? You put it at home, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, geez.
It was buried in the little select board area.
It was a perfect little stand to hold everything.
To make a motion to the effective
Yeah.
John's purchase of the, yeah.
I'll make a motion to
So there's a couple, yeah, keep going.
To approve John's purchase of the eight hundred dollar or less laptop, so that we can zoom and record meetings, with sixty dollar a year antivirus software after the first year.
Any discussion? I'm hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So I get, you have the authority to
So we have a little closet to keep it in at home.
I'll, I'll set it inside my house, my door.
So if you want, I can, I can, you can use the town's credit card, so that it's not out of your pocket.
All right.
So whenever you're ready to make the purchase
I'll get it.
Okay.
Great.
You're going to use the what?
My, my credit card.
Oh, instead of being reimbursed?
Instead of him having to take it out of his own money.
And then town website, did you want to talk about that?
So I've been doing the updating since autumn, and Skip, Lindsay decided that FEMA was more important. And, you know, it's an area where I have some expertise beyond the content parts of it. So I've gotten pretty familiar with the website. It, you know, the good news is it's got a solid foundation. Skip has done a tremendous job of updating content to it. The technical foundation is also solid. The appearance of it, not so much. And so I've looked at fifteen town websites, twenty-five towns bigger than Wilbury, twenty-five smaller, to get a sense of what they're doing. Ours is at least attractive, and it's not just a window dressing thing. I have to do it, the impression the town makes, and whether it gets used and how easy it is to use. Both for towns, people are using it, but for the people who are also doing it as well. Ideally, you know, the town clerk, the town treasurer, select board administrator, doing some of the update, it wouldn't all come down to one person. I'm happy doing it, but looking down the road, you know, I want to make sure I'm not creating a bottleneck for the town. Since the website was put online, there are platforms that do this nationally, do municipal websites. I contacted seven of them, sat through presentations from four of them. So got a pretty good lay of land, also a really good way of best practices in this area. I talked with the person then, then who put the, who developed the website that we have now. And I'm not at a point of saying if you want to improve the town website, whether we should go with one of these national platforms or work with them. The top number, if you went with a national platform, is about twenty-eight hundred. And so my recommendation, you need to budget that for the next year. Presently, the website costs about four hundred a year and did absolutely nothing. That's going to go up to about seven hundred for the next fiscal year, because there's several years worth of content in it now. Going to have to move up to the next block of storage for that. That's pretty much it at this point. There are, so I've done a directory page that holds together what we're on several other pages, and I'll be reaching out to you and others in terms of making sure that's current, adding content, contact information, as you wish. You know, if you're looking at the website and you see anything that looks unintuitive or wrong, sure, with the current technology, happy to update that. If you go to a national platform, going to have to clean it up anyway. It's kind of like when you go to move, you want to organize yourself before moving, and so this is all good work in regards of what the town does in terms of redesigning the website. Something to mention is that among best practices are, in addition to agendas and minutes, in a lot of communities, they're also providing online and meeting packet. So things like highway report, treasures report, the notes that I sent to you, they're going to that packet, available for people to look at, which is also particularly helpful if somebody's joining and needing by Zoom. So anyway, that's something to think about. And that can be done within the current technology. And I'd be happy to do that if that's something that the select board wants to do or drive. And that's, I think that's pretty much it on that.
So that, that national platform, that would be a twenty-eight hundred dollar annual?
If we went with that, it would be twenty-eight annual.
Annual, okay.
Not annual, though.
Pardon?
You said twenty-eight hundred to set it up, or annually?
If we went with a national platform, it would be about twenty-eight hundred annually for us to set it up and continue. It means, you know, to some extent, we're paying more than paid for. It's probably around four hundred a year now.
But no matter what, even if we do nothing, it's going to go up to seven hundred a year
Even just to keep the lights on with what we have now.
Yeah.
And presumably, if we went with, then on a upgrade, it would be less than the twenty-eight hundred annually. But I don't want to start down that road unless I'm sure that we're going to have a lot better hooking website than what we have right now.
Right. And then, would he be able to upgrade that website with input from folks like yourself or folks in town, or?
Yeah. So visual design is not a pure need, it's forte.
Okay.
It's not mine.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think, and I talked with Alex Keltz about this, some, who's been slammed within the beer stock, so I'll chat with him some of the
Yeah, our visual design is this thing.
It is. It comes to a point where, you know, for twenty-eight hundred a year, not only get the design, but you get the ongoing upgrades, as well as the ongoing support for it. So, you know, it's, it can be a difference of fifteen hundred a year after the design is done. So, you know, you've got to balance that with what's a lot better website, got to look at it in terms of volunteer time, in terms of keeping it current. So it's, as I mentioned in the note, there are some pretty significant offsets and pluses and minuses that's going your way. I don't really have a good sense of that yet, but I will in a couple months. And it's not a decision that needs to be, you know, made right away. If, you know, six to one, half dozen the other, a lot better to go hopefully and keep the spend local. But, but bottom line, for the best interest of the town is to have a good and reliable, good-looking website.
Well, something you said around today showed like how many keystrokes it takes to do a little, a change, a name, this
Yes, I mean, for some, it's not a big deal, but for like a page that has tables, which the director does, we don't have any We don't have any of the tools for doing that automatically, so that's all.
Looks like a lot of work. I can see why Skip got sick of it.
Yeah.
I thought it was just, you know, pick here, put it there, but no.
We're getting back to Randy's point about the two skips and all the way down to the town.
Oh.
That's a lot of work.
Oh, I couldn't tell.
So, you know, again, part of thinking ahead is making sure you're using volunteer time appropriately, efficiently.
And you're sort of becoming skip number three.
So if we budget twenty-eight hundred though, will be, that's a safe budget number for this?
Got a good placeholder that covers all bases, it may be less.
Thanks for that input.
Sure.
Definitely, he is third skip because he won't charge for auditing or anything as well.
The town reporter.
He's another volunteer that deserves a nice big shout out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to go.
Thank you.
Get out of your quick.
Really, no, I mean, John, I was hoping under this town meeting warning, we could have one more discussion about the pros and cons also with you guys here of going to a five-member board.
Let's jump right to that agenda item if you're willing to stay for another ten minutes, okay?
I know the... The main reason is to have more people to do the work. To, you know, take on special projects like, you know, working on the website and working on the road, things like that. That's... But there's a lot of other aspects to it. It was hard to get, took a lot of phone calling to get him to run last year, the year before. It took a lot of finagling to get Lizzie to run.
I looked at one phone call.
There was a lot of thought that went before that.
I wonder if it would be less intimidating, I mean, because I have to admit, it is a little intimidating that there's only three board members, right? And I wonder if it would be less intimidating for folks if it was a larger board? I mean, if you can't guess, I'm in favor of it, but...
That's the other, yeah.
Yep.
That's another plus.
My two cents is that it seems to be typically hard to get people to do anything in town and the select board is the most unforgiving and hard part. It's really hard to get three people to be on the select board. I can't imagine five, that's just my take. I mean, it would, and as far as spreading the workload, you know, does that happen now with a three-board, three-member board? It didn't in my day, being on the three-member board. I pretty much, with the exception of when Skip Lindsey and I were on the board together, I pretty much did all the work because the other people were too busy.
Well, that's, yeah, that's kinda how it is right now.
Diana does it all right now.
So that's just the people's life situation, you know? When you get older and retire, you have more time to give away or... And then you kind of, after a while, you resent that because you don't have much time for yourself. So... But, and, you know, so whether you actually could get five members would... And then that's five more personalities that sort of have to work together, that could be... I guess it wouldn't be a nightmare because you always have the tyranny of the majority to make decisions. I mean, I think there's pros and cons of three or five.
For sure.
And a lot of them are unknown until you're in the middle of it.
I think one of the other valuable things is just to have more voices among the select board too. To have, you know, it... We rely a lot on, you know, everybody else here in a select board, meaning, you know, where I think typically it's... I know at least in a school board meeting where there's eleven members, there's all of that input and information and educational experience to come to help make a decision. With three members, it's like having too small a classroom, right, sometimes? So that would be my case for...
I would agree with you there, having five members, there would be more viewpoints or discussion. You know, one of the faults of select boards, I think, is just historical memory. You know, what happened three years ago when you weren't on the board. And that's, I can see Skip and I sometimes playing a role in that with just what has happened in the recent past. So whether somehow the five members could be staggered in a way so that there's a couple members that at least have some knowledge of what's happened in the recent past to help the new members kind of, or help the discussion. That would be definitely a plus for the five-member board, I think.
Yeah, then it's, you know, it takes a while for people to get up to speed on there. But if you take like one chunk of a project to work on, it'd be a little easier. John, what do you have to say?
Well, I've never been on a three-person select board, never been on a five-person select board. I'd be happy if I get out of this life and that remained. You know, I see the problem in terms of getting three good people to be on the select board, which has been a real tussle for the town last few years. And in terms of operationally, you know, I think Michael's point about coordinating on five people is extra work, more work than coordinating on one or three. So in terms of workload, that it might be about the same. More voices seems like a great idea and...
Well, for democracy, I suppose, but for getting things done.
Sure, sure. And, you know, kind of similar to the town meeting going from Tuesday to Saturday, who knows how long it stays that way? But there were enough people who weren't happy with what it was, so it was worth trying something different. And this may be a similar situation where it's worth, you know, teeing up the idea of a five-person board and giving it a whirl. It's not, it's not like something that can't be undone if it doesn't work out. And I and other people in this community, you know, are used to a three-person board, so our bias is in that direction. In Worcester, it's a five-person board, isn't it?
It was three-person when I was on that, yeah, but I don't know what it is now.
I think Calis has a five, lot of persons.
So you have probably experience working with a five-member board. Do you feel like it's a lot harder to have conversations and get done with the conversation and...
I definitely feel that it would be harder to get things done.
Okay.
Get a decision. Because now you have three, you have five opinions versus three, and they're always gonna be different. They're always gonna be different. So I did find that it was more difficult to actually get a decision made. And maybe it was just the nature of the board, but I'm not saying all boards would be that way. But I think it would be more challenging to get a decision and a decision made. Also, I have two more people to satisfy on the road, so I'm not a huge fan of it, but I'll accept what you guys decide.
When I was on the select board, I was always kind of envious of Calis because they had more than enough people to do all of the different things that they do. But in doing the road work with the Swiss road crews of the past, I was where Calis also had this road advisory committee that seemed to create more nightmares for the road crew than...
Yeah, and then, and then the whole... Then they, then they all quit at once. So, you know, having five members select board, they all quit at once. So, you know, obviously something was going on there that wasn't...
Now there was a lot, there was a lot going on there during that time, for sure. It wasn't just me.
Randy, did you have an opinion about any of this or...
I mean, ideally, the pros, I mean, okay, you got five people. This person is in charge of town policies and then they can update each one. But saying that and doing that is gonna be here. And I, yeah. You see, there's so many positions still for the town that aren't filled.
True.
And it's that one call like the night before that, just praying they're gonna wanna take the position because whoever wants it.
So...
It's gonna be challenging.
I have had a couple conversations with some community members because I think, short of that, if not going to a five-person board, asking for, like, and maybe it's, maybe it's like a formal ask at town meeting or a front porch forum post, but like essentially like a select board assistance that would... Because I know, I know for Liz and I, in the middle of the day, there's like some select board business that has to happen during business hours, which I think both of us find extremely challenging to make phone calls and sometimes don't have cell service at all. And so having some folks that don't have the responsibility of a select board position, but would be willing to, you know, folks in town would be willing to make, you know, during a meeting, we have a list of things that we knew to accomplish before the next meeting. Maybe they would be willing to like kind of sit in on the meetings at least and then take some of that on. And maybe we wouldn't get that, folks to volunteer, but...
I think that'd be, that'd be huge. And I don't even think it would necessarily take that much. Like, one person in half an hour could, in half hour, in the middle of a business day, who is like at home or like in an office, could do all of it. You know what I mean?
Right.
Really pretty easily, it's just having that chunk of time.
And there are varieties of, you would probably have to make this person, I don't believe that there are...
Right.
And VLCT could advise you on it, but there are varieties of select board assistant. You know, like Hardwick, they have a town manager. The town manager does all of that. And then the select board just, here's what he has to say. And I remember knowing Wiz, I can't remember her last name, but she was on the select board.
Liz Dow.
Yeah, Liz Dow. You know, she said that the select board in Hardwick, they just basically make policies. And the town manager presents things for them to discuss and guides the discussion and they make a decision based on the research that the town manager does. And Hardwick is a lot bigger than Woodbury. It wouldn't, you know, but you, there are town, you could have like a part-time town manager. VLCT has different board.
Town administrative assistant, I think you could have a town administrator. Because a town manager is a whole nother level of government, you need a, yeah. But it's just someone to, a staff person to help. I mean, we have great help now between you and you and Skip and Skip and Danielle and we... I mean, there are others out there doing their parts, but...
Michael, do you say that we would need to make them an employee, this person an employee because...
I can't imagine somebody just doing it as a volunteer.
Because not all the calls you make are nice ones. Not, you're gonna get slack back from, and that's hard.
Yeah.
What was that? I'm sorry.
Making a phone call that you're, it'll be like a third person, like, I'm calling on behalf of the select board and then they're just reaming at you.
I think we would be tragedy sensitive to make sure that we would make those phone calls.
Yeah. To me, it's more like the question, like the calling to find out the answer to a question, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's more research, to do the research or to make the calls, to make connections.
Do you foresee that there would be a problem in being granted access if they weren't an official employee of the...
It's a liability, they would see it as a liability. The insurance company is gonna see it as a liability anyway.
I mean, like, VLCT won't deal with anyone other than select board members, so...
You have to be.
So if you're trying to figure out something that VLCT could offer legal advice on or whatever, they won't. I don't think they will, I don't know if a town...
No, I know, Steve ran into that already.
Yeah.
So do you think our first maybe, if we're not gonna move towards a five-person select board, I don't know that we will or we won't. But our first alternative option would be to talk to VLCT and see what other kind of like...
What the other options are.
Organizational systems there are.
I know from my time on the select board that there are different options to help select board with the management of town businesses.
Again, that's something I probably needed to do during the business day.
There's always email, I always forget, we could probably email them, you know what I mean?
Email them, they probably have some printed information that they could send to you and you'd read it on your own time.
Which is fine.
Pound the nails or whatever, you know, but...
John?
So having looked at these fifty town websites pretty carefully, a few things stand out. One is almost every, that may have to do with getting people to run on the select board. Almost everybody offers hybrid meetings, so it's easy for folks to dial in and see a meeting. We are the only town in the contiguous area that does not make every select board meeting available online.
So people can participate or just walk?
Correct, they can ask questions.
Participate and...
Well, they only participate during, it's the same, it operates the same as a meeting, so they can participate during public comment. And they, you have control of the mic, so somebody can't just like interrupt a meeting at any point.
Second, a lot of towns our size have select board meetings once a month. You know, in terms of making the job more appealing, the office more appealing, that seems to be a consideration. And third is, there are a lot of them that now have part-time town administrators is the term, who do a lot of the light work.
In fact, our new treasurer might be wanting to take on some more stuff.
Let her get in the office.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, I wish we could talk about that for sure. Alright, so that was what you, for town meeting warning?
Well, there's a whole, there's a bunch of other...
Other stuff that that was...
I mean, that, all that Steve Murphy stuff that...
Just real quick, you just mentioned once a month meetings, which would make my life heck of a lot easier, but do you guys think if we were doing once a month meetings, would that mean the meeting time would be doubled? Because we'd have to cover a lot more.
You'd have to review a whole month's worth of bills.
Right, yeah.
I feel like...
Making decisions would have to be making a decision and wouldn't like...
Not just talking about it, yeah, okay, that could be really long.
Back in the nineties when I was on the board, it was, we used to go till ten o'clock. You know, we were punch drunk and laughing by the time we got out of the meeting, but it was a different world.
I won't be here at ten o'clock, especially in the winter time.
Well, you know, I think that hopefully, at some point, our meetings can, you know, at some point, hopefully, like our flood, our FEMA piece will be done, so we would...
In hopes that, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure, skip.
My experience with that, it could always be different crises that would take up a lot of time. Phew, done with that.
There's another one.
Bang.
There's another one, yeah.
There's always something that runs, certainly.
Yeah.
You're still in silo, you're silent, you're not gonna make it on.
But I feel like what I've heard mostly is that the five-person select board is not that appealing or you find too many challenges to even...
I think just getting five people to serve in Woodbury would be harder, that's my opinion. But I think, you know, getting an administrative assistant would be the way to go.
What might that look like? That might be like another part-time...
It would be a part-time...
Half-hour position, or sorry, another twenty-hour week position or something like that?
Exactly.
Yeah, maybe not that much.
I mean, that's sort of what I, I consider myself the administrative assistant for the town road crew, doing the grant work and allowing them to focus on... Allowing them to focus on the work itself. And I did that as a select board member initially and kind of learned it, and now I'm getting paid for it, which I'm grateful for. And there's, you know, this winter I plan on, you know, they've upgraded the whole municipal road general permit, permitting stuff. And I have to learn that stuff in order to keep up, updated with that, so.
So you're on salary already, well, not on salary, but you've been paid. You came up with extra projects?
Well, you know.
Michael, put your foot down.
Right.
Anyways, yeah. You don't have to answer that question.
I mean, there's a learning curve to being on the select board, and once you've learned it, and then you're off, you know, that's kind of what I've been taking advantage of is becoming a town employee.
Yeah, Skip too.
And yeah, Skip also, so.
And you're right, we've benefited, as a select board, we've benefited from having the two of you here.
Just for the.
With that institutional knowledge, you know, that like, it's not written down anywhere, you know, it would take us forever to go find it.
Yeah, that's a real weakness, I think, with the state's select board, kind of small town. But it's a reality too, I guess.
And he is way underpaid, but that's my opinion.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your opinions.
Do you wanna?
I mean, we have to make a decision at some point.
I mean, having it discussed at town meeting would be interesting, I think.
You can't really discuss it, though, unless it's on the agenda, and we shouldn't put it on the agenda unless we.
It can't be on the agenda as just a discussion, as opposed to an actual decision.
Well, the select board has a moment to kind of give a brief overview of what we've done for the year, right?
Why can't it be discussed at pre-town meeting?
Could be.
It could be, but then it's too late to get in on the warning for an actual vote.
Or with other business at the end, but usually by that time, half the people that were there are gone.
So even if you do put it on the mora, and it fails, then it fails.
But I think that.
But then if it passes, then if we're not prepared.
You live up to it.
We need to be committed one way or another.
Pre-town meeting's a good idea, and if it was advertised as a topic for discussion, maybe more people would show up, cause they'd be interested one way or the other.
At least maybe we could get information for like the following.
I think that would be the, the reason for it, to get the people's opinion about.
Whether they'd wanna vote.
Whether they'd wanna do, because ultimately it's.
But they really, I mean, I don't know, if the public would really have a valid opinion on it, because.
They wouldn't have a vested background to make.
Right, I think there's a lot to get.
We'd have to be really behind it before we decided to push it.
What would we have to lose?
No.
Like, if we had a five-person select board, and we couldn't get two members, we'd still just, we'd just still be a three-person select board, nothing would have changed.
If we could try to appoint the people to fill the vacancies, we wouldn't be elected, and that could.
Can you serve them like a summons, like, knock, knock, boom, you're on the select board?
Just throw their name in. If they're not there.
They have to, you know.
I mean.
The three, three, I mean, we usually agree on everything anyways, and very seldom have a two-to-one vote on anything, but you would have to if you had a five-member board with only three members. You still have to have a majority of the quorum to vote on anything, so.
If you have a five-member board, and there were only three members, and one of them was missing, then you wouldn't have quorum.
Right.
That would be a major disadvantage, yeah.
We couldn't, we couldn't sign bills or anything.
Right, you could still have the meeting, you just can't hold, make decisions, so. That's something to think about.
All right. Thank you.
Did you wanna talk about, before we, or do you wanna keep talking about the town meeting warning, or did you wanna talk about tax mapping?
Oh, yeah, oh, I was really happy to hear.
Bye, Tom.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
I was really happy to hear that the listeners are actually taking up the job of getting tax maps done.
I don't know what that means exactly.
What?
What is tax mapping?
They need upgraded tremendously.
We have, yeah, two thousand eighteen was the last time it was done, and I was the clerk then, and I managed the process. And back in the nineties, I think I managed the process back then when I was on the select board. And it probably is a listener job, but they've never done it. And now Barb Schlesinger from the tax department, who advises our listers, she told them that they need to get on this before we get our reappraisal, and Bonnie grabbed ahold of it, and she's taking.
So with that benefit, they'll be digital.
Huh?
With that benefit, with that upgrade.
Yeah.
Tax maps will be digital.
Well, okay, I mean, they are available online now, you can get, you can get the town, you know, the state.
It'll flow much easier, it'll flow much easier, they can just.
We have to have.
Change, print out a new one, and then we can, yeah.
So it's like, we're talking about a map with parcel boundaries, and it says how much each is valued at, and whatever other information.
Just our tax maps out on the, out on the.
On the table.
On the table, that shows the parcels, but instead of white out.
Ever since we got the maps done, Ron's been updating them just by hand, which really, so that they're out of date. So, but anyways, Bonnie's been interviewing a couple of companies and learning about the process, and I'm really happy. It's gonna be certainly less than eight thousand dollars, so we don't have to learn too much about bidding.
Good.
So that was great to learn.
And it's more than, yeah, there's money there.
Yeah, right, Barbara said we could use some of that listener education money for that, too.
And/or the reappraisal, yes.
So that was good news. And our, I don't remember when our reappraisal would start, but it's not till like.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, sometime in twenty-six, so we've got plenty of time.
So then, other items, Diana, that you wanted to speak about on the town meeting warning?
Well, there's all this stuff that Steve's been researching, but you know, I don't know if he, well, things like what can go in the town report, that's really up to the auditors and the town clerk. VLCT doesn't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, and they didn't sound like, it didn't sound like they cared, right? They had no opinion about what went into the town.
And whether or not we can make special time during the meeting for reports from the school board and stuff, we can, you know. As, as the moderator, he's, really wants to make sure he knows exactly what he's doing, but we can, yeah.
But it did sound like we can't necessarily put, well, maybe we can, maybe I misunderstood it, when we asked for the representatives to come.
Oh, that whole thing, yeah.
Sounded like their opinion was, is that we would still have to just invite them to speak, suspend the.
Yeah, yeah.
We couldn't put them as a, as an agenda item.
Right, no, I suggested, and I already emailed Dave Acromoney, and telling him that we don't just show up at ten o'clock like they did last year. That was kind of a mistake, somebody told him to show up at ten, and they did. So, but yeah, we talked about maybe having them, planning a time for them, maybe like eleven-thirty or something, and give them each five minutes, and then time for question, and then if people wanna talk to them again while lunch is going on.
I thought it was a really good idea, cause I think it's great to have them available, but it went on way too long. And a lot of people just wanna vote, and they don't wanna listen.
So, yeah, as far as changing the, the, changing the how things are listed on the warning, I don't think we can change it. I mean, last year, Steve went to a VLCT training and found out that we should be putting the amount of all the budgets in the warning. We used to just leave it open, and we say, what amount shall be approved, and then one of the selectmen would say, we, we move, you suggest, you know, ten million, five hundred thousand or something, we shouldn't do that. We should tell the voters exactly what they'll be voting on.
Ahead of time.
Right, and that way, if some, after all the other articles have been approved, that would be the time to do the vote on the larger issues, because we can't increase things, but we can decrease them. We can't add expenses to the warning that haven't been.
So you're saying that we could, all that list of things has to happen before the town budget gets voted on?
Right, right.
Through the.
Which is in the, in the town report anyway.
Right.
Right. The town report has the budget in there too, ahead of time, right?
Right. Oops, they're going out again, sounds like. So for any people who are concerned about, they don't like the meeting to be so long, or they wanna just vote and leave, you know, I mean, those are probably the same people who didn't want, who wanted Australian ballots anyway.
Yeah, but.
More people wanted to.
There's more people that voted from the Australian ballots, though.
Yeah, okay, but that's, but people didn't wanna give up town meeting.
Well, that was like, that was like a fifty-fifty vote, so it was, it was literally, I was at that meeting.
Fifty-fifty.
It was like fifty-fifty, there was like one vote, literally, that split it. Um, so I think those people have a really valid point, you know, like, they shouldn't have to sit. And I don't think rearranging the order of the budget items is gonna have that much impact on the length of time. I really think more of it is having the school board, you know, giving their presentation, having the people come from the representatives or legislator, and giving their presentation, all of that stuff.
Paul usually gets up and talks about the fire department status.
Yeah, like, I mean, yeah, a lot of the presentations are really what makes it take a really long time. So I think the more of those that could be pushed to the end, the better.
Do you know what, they're gonna have to have a second town meeting again for the school budget like they did last year.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm assuming they would, because.
Have they mentioned anything?
Robin would know.
What's the question?
War meeting?
Well, he's on the Hazen Board, and they always do a separate vote, budget vote, right? They don't, we don't vote on that anymore, I think, unless people go to the meeting.
It's just information.
But same is true of the elementary school, that's a separate meeting, a separate vote, that doesn't happen at our.
No, it doesn't happen at the town meeting, but I think last year we had to have another meeting, another vote on the Tuesday.
That's because it got denied, right?
No, no, it wouldn't have been denied, that would have been the first vote on the, on the elementary budget. Anyways, so if people were to just vote and leave, that's the biggest part of our tax bill, and that's what they should vote. I mean, I remember all the years we had the Hazen vote, we would do it in the town office, and, you know, that was really the biggest part of the whole tax bill, and maybe fifty people would come, and we were there all day, and, you know, so, I don't know, it's a tough one. What people like and what they don't like, and we talked, well, anyways, certain, certain people and certain legislators did tend to go on and on and on, and I'm trying to warn them not to do that this year.
And like, like Paul was saying, that there's a lot of older people in our town, where either it's COVID, or they don't wanna, Australian ballot, it's great, they can vote, and they don't have to be there.
Well, I don't think we're gonna go through that again.
People that come to the town.
Right, I know, it's mostly, yeah.
My observation.
Oh, no.
Now that we're part of the older people.
Yeah. But yeah, there are younger people too, but. Yeah, can't please everybody.
Oh, no, I know.
All right. Is it time to move on to budget work?
I don't think we have anything to do, I think we're waiting for Brandy to plug in some more numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll put in Michael's numbers, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll get those numbers to you.
But setting a time for another meeting, a budget meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
I don't know if I even have a calendar for next year.
And then, things that we should also think about, budgeting for, or this suggestion of an administrative assistant, which wouldn't be huge, but like, we should think about that. Between the six of us here, we can remember that that's something we should think about. You looking for a calendar, Dan?
Yeah.
Yep.
Wouldn't it be crazy to think about doing it prior to our next select board meeting at five?
So maybe.
Or is that like too far out?
Is that?
Well, our other, our other budget meetings took more than an hour, so.
Yeah, we can't wait until January thirteenth.
Second Monday in January would be.
It's gonna be into the report.
How about the seventh? How about the seventh, that office will be open? Right, is that Sunday?
Yeah, so this is Tuesday.
Yeah.
Sure.
Seventh it is.
Down at the office again?
I think that's a good place, we'll record it, audio record it.
At six?
Now that you're a pro.
I'm a pro. Six o'clock, or do you wanna, do you wanna start earlier, try to get it done earlier?
Oh, it's tough, um.
I'd vote for it a little earlier, cause it's dark.
Tell me the time, I'll be there.
It's five thirty, can you do five thirty?
Five thirty.
Well, Brandy doesn't work, the office doesn't open until seven, but she can still maybe come early if she.
Oh, no, I'll be, yeah, this is, you said five thirty?
Yeah.
So in the meantime, I will get you updated ones to, for you to review.
Great.
And then, yeah.
Thank you.
So when we get to it, it'll be just like, boom, boom.
Be fast, and then, at this point, do we, Alfie doesn't need to be here, because we've gone through that, that highway budget twice now.
Correct, other than filling in the grants, which me and Michael will get together on.
Okay.
It should be good, and then I've got the five percent increase, as long as, yeah.
We had a couple questions still though, right, like gargrels, I feel like, do we need, do we need those?
We put a number in for gargrels.
Put a number in.
We did.
Yeah, and then we'll just have to work within that budget number.
Okay.
And then, once we get to the.
Depending on what your bottom number was, you're gonna.
If we have to adjust anything depending on.
Yeah.
We have a thousand dollars plugged in there, is that right? That seems really low.
Should be ten.
Ten?
Okay, that sounds more realistic.
Oh, gargrel, sorry.
Okay.
So, and also, Brandy, we were gonna talk with you about the status of the HERF fund.
Oh, yeah.
So your last page due to, due from? Currently, you have a hundred and thirty-three thousand in there, so you still have two more quarters, two more quarters of Swenson to go in, which is gonna be, it'll probably be, I don't know, fifteen grand. So yeah, what are we looking at for a new truck, I'm assuming that's what you're.
Highway equipment reserves on, okay, one thirty-three, okay.
But we, it's still looking at a year to order-ish?
I don't know, you heard the.
What, what are we, what are we looking at for amounts? Cause each year, are you looking at increasing the ninety thousand, or are you looking at just getting enough in here to buy a new truck?
I don't know.
What's the plan?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't discussed that at all.
I can't remember what that question was. Five-two-hundred.
Hundred grand? And so, next fiscal year, as of July of twenty-twenty-five, another ninety grand goes, gets put into here, so you're good.
So I don't know if you were here when Alfie told us that he found a place in New Hampshire that actually can provide those trucks a lot faster than.
Okay.
The last place.
They're going out now from day of order, that's amazing.
Oh, wow.
I've heard of that.
Yeah, no, you don't want that money.
Not today, okay, not quite yet.
Yeah, I transferred the money.
So we don't need to budget for that, the money is already there?
Oh, no, 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 he's talking about only a month in advance.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm not, I'm not needing that, I just brought it because, brought it to the board, because at that point, we were looking. Because at that point, we were looking at a year.
Right.
Now it's not a year, so we've got a little.
We've got time.
Where our funds are coming from.
So.
I would like to have a new truck in place before next fiscal year.
Okay.
So Lizzie, what I was saying is, if, so this year it's 90,000. It's been 90,000 for the longest time.
Yeah.
Putting into the HERF. So next year's, after July 1st, 90,000, another 90,000 will be going in here, which will cover the whole truck.
So, okay, got it.
Not needing to, I mean, just budgeting and then saying 90,000.
Gotcha. Okay.
And there's a little bit more from the Swenson.
Correct.
That's going into the paving, what you're using for the paving.
It does not go into the paving anymore.
Yeah, it goes.
It's just strictly into the highway and the HERF. So yeah, we'll be getting hypothetically around 15,000 to go into the HERF by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
But the 90 grand from July, which is our new year starting, that'll be enough for him to hypothetically order a truck and have it here within a few months.
Gotcha.
So we don't have to increase anything.
That's good.
Oh, I ain't giving you a taste.
Oh, Mr. Monsqueta.
You said before snowplows, so someone's been flying until November, so next year.
That's for the fire department.
So in the, in the summer, I could be looking and starting to put a truck together. I mean, it just takes a little time.
Yeah.
Figure out what I want on the truck and it's a different, it's a different supplier, so.
This is the, in the highway fund down here.
But yeah, I would say.
This is the, where was it? The $90,000.
The HERF transfer.
Yeah, we take out of our whole highway budget and.
I would start, yeah.
It's good.
At least talking with them, tell them the plan, you know? I could have info as of September. I want the truck by October. Kind of that thing, yeah.
Yeah. I just, you know, everybody's ordering trucks, so.
Right.
That's right now, they're a month out, you know, and it seems like they're going to try to hold that. But when every town is ordering a truck, you know, in October, you know, they can get back up.
And hypothetically, we'll still get something out, or is that part of the trade in?
What's that?
At the trade in? 2014.
Yes, that'll be a trade. We'll get something out of that unless we try to sell it out.
That's what I was, me, that's what I was saying is we still have an asset that's going to have value.
Yeah, the last one we got, the last truck we traded was 33,000.
Yeah, yeah.
So I assume we'll get close to that in October, if not more.
That's another bonus. So we'll be eating all the money that's out in the HERF.
It's a wild trail.
I saw that one already.
Yeah, we, we need to decide whether we want to budget for that or.
At that point?
Sounds like we don't have to.
It's really, it's not safe for me on the road. It needs, really needs brakes. It's an E8, it's 36 years old.
Hypothetically, are you selling it or?
Right.
Trading it for?
You'd probably do better if you had it outright to a private, to a private contractor or something. That would be a better bet because the dealer's not going to be, they're not even going to look at it. They're not.
I know.
This is the Delta trailer.
This is the Delta.
So we might put that in our budget or we might take it out of HERF.
The, the trailer replacement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Budgeting it, because I saw the 10,000 in the highway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to make that simple, not be pulling it out there and then increase that zero and pull it out of there.
I think we were putting it in there and like kind of creating a wish list and with the recognition that we possibly could go back. And like, we can't do that this year. That gets budgeted for, for next year. So we've got a lot in here that I've got starred that I'm like, okay, well, these are places that, this is kind of a wish, but we might not be able to do it.
I'll see.
So.
So yeah, when I could do that virgin.
Well, that's fine. It's good to have it in there. All right, so that's it. We've discussed morning items for town meeting. Uh, we have, we skipped over town office flood repairs. Kind of got bad news about that.
Oh, I can't do it.
He tore his ACL.
He what?
He tore his ACL.
Oh, no.
He's going to be, yeah, I don't know that he can work for another, for a while. Yep.
For you too.
Which one was that?
This is a guy just put, was going to put in touch with the, just have him do it. He's not, he's not an employee of mine, but he's.
Oh, no, 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 no. The under, under the stairs thing?
This is the fire door and the under the stairs.
Like packaged together.
But I've, I've ordered the door.
Different fire.
So I've ordered the door and the door is on its way. It might even be here and we can get it delivered. So I guess.
This is just the door for the bottom of the stairs.
This is the door for the bottom of the stairs, and there was a little bit of work replacing that paneling at the bottom of the stairs.
Well, that was the thing. Who was, so the new plan was to leave the sheetrock so she can finish it.
Yep.
And then do it from the inside of the stairs.
Yeah, I think you can just pull that paneling off and replace that paneling.
Right.
And then so the taping can just keep happening.
Okay. So I don't know if you're, you're a mud and.
Making.
Yeah, she knows.
I kind of bowed out because I haven't even been back there to see like the paneling. I'm not, I haven't laid eyes on it.
See, why don't you maybe do that with some bin or something like that, that little part, that little piece of wood at the lower part of the stairwell rather than.
You're talking about the paneling that, we're talking about pulling off?
Yeah.
What about it?
Couldn't we just do a bin sealer or something like that instead? I mean, it's not that.
My understanding without having been part of that walkthrough was that the point of tearing it off is to get to the back of the sheetrock, right?
It's not that big a deal to take it off.
Okay.
It isn't.
Okay.
And to replace it.
Yeah, so.
No, I thought the taking of the sheetrock off was to get to the back of the wood paneling, but here we go again.
Oh, okay, right, right, right. I don't know, because I kind of stepped out of the whole thing a little bit. Before ready for more tape, I can.
I think she can go ahead and do it.
She can just do it.
And then I think that, um, I think if you want me to, I think I can fit in, put that door in. And, um. I don't know how that works. I'm on the select boards. I don't really know.
Really doesn't.
You did it, right? Yeah. So if you want me to do it, I can do it.
Doesn't have that much to do with timing. I mean, it's not like the door is holding up anything else.
Oh, God, no, no, because there's a temporary, there's a door on it right now. I mean, yeah, obviously, yes, the team would want.
It'd be nice to get it done before paint though, because we got to pull the trim off and put new trim on.
And does, does paint person know about the, um, the outside wall under the windows?
Outside wall under the windows.
Needs to be, you know, wire brushed and.
Downstairs, the cement that's on, the paint that's on the cement.
Oh.
They want it treated and or something.
Uh, nothing I knew about or talked about. I mean, I would have, I pretty much told her, like, I thought we should pretty the whole room up. So to me, that would include the concrete, but.
It doesn't, that has nothing to do with, with mold or anything. It just needs to be done as part of the painting.
Yeah, so I don't know, like, I do kind of think she ended up getting like different information from multiple people, which is, made this a little tricky. Um, so when I tell her that we're ready to just finish everything up, um, I can specifically tell her just all surfaces. I mean, to me, if that's like, if that's really the deal now, and that's like, we are sure of it. Just everything, ceiling, walls, everything. Okay.
She's not doing, we shouldn't be doing anything with the ceiling?
Yeah, we went back and forth on that.
Okay, dear.
Uh, she was going to try to, there's repair that needs to be done. There's like tape falling off.
Couple of little spaces, yeah.
So she was going to do repair that needed to be done. We talked about what to do with like the popcorn sort of texture and um, I think we kind of settled on just whatever she can do that's minimal, so probably not really messing with it. But just like patching where she can and making it look as good as she can.
Yeah.
And then painting, um, so.
I don't think the rest of the ceiling really even needs to be painted.
I think.
The whole thing needs to be painted. Like, it's going to look horrible if you paint.
Right.
Have the ceiling.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, she's already painted it, like it's pretty much not to. Okay, I will tell her, just do everything.
And I'll try to get to that door in the next first couple of weeks of January.
So do we need to?
For us?
It's already, yeah, it's all ordered. It comes as a big unit.
No.
And then I think, I, I think we ordered, we ordered the bulkhead door. I found a bulkhead door.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that's, that, but that is a special order door. It's got to be custom made and it's, um, like won't. No, it's only 700 bucks, but it, um, it'll, it won't be in until like early February.
And it's not really a flood repair.
But the one at the bottom of the stairs is in. I just got to get it there and I can, we can put it in. Get this done. We take that off the agenda. Every week, like, ah, I don't want to look at that again. All right, Tom.
Oh, did you think, did you ever think about buying that air cleaner that the guy suggested for?
No, because, not yet. No, I, I haven't researched it. I haven't.
Okay, well, he said he'd be glad to give you some advice on what to buy and stuff. When you get to that, Chris Williams?
Yep, yep. I have his email and he has showed us. Robin actually Googled it, hooked up.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so we're at eight o'clock. I think we can approve bills and payroll orders. And I think we could probably adjourn unless there's any other business.
No.
To attend to.
I'm good, I'm tired.
Need a motion.
I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yay.
All right. Motion passes and we are adjourning the meeting at 8:05.